Roll call of the members of the zoning board of appeals, Mr. Lemina. Here, Mr. Lopes. Here, Mr. Pelton. Here, and Chairman Tucker. Here, first item on the agenda is application A 2110 J E K Enterprises LLC, Seven Franklin Street, Revere, Mass. Appealing from the decision of the inspector of buildings of the city of Revere, respecting the determination as to the current use of Seven Franklin Street as set forth in the order to correct dated January 19th, 2021.
Before we take that up, seeing that there is only four members here this evening, we will offer continuance if any one of the applicants wish to continue. Please step up to the microphone and state your name and address and we'll put the continuance.
Mr. Chairman, I have five and six Agnes Way. And this is our first time up and would ask for a continuance.
Okay, so five and six, so that's calendar item number A 21-23 for a continuance. Is there any others?
Yes, John Ritchie, R 24 Franklin Street. And now this is about the J E K permit.
The what?
J E K Enterprises.
The applicant would have to come up, not, not... The applicant would have to come up. Is there anyone else that wishes to have a continuance?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Jonathan Gold and this, I'm appearing for A 2122, which is Harris Realty Trust. And we're requesting a continuance.
Okay, that's in Councilor Powers' ward, correct?
I'm sorry?
That's Councilor Powers' ward?
Yes, and I have spoken to Councilor Powers.
So we have two requests for continuance. What's the wish of the members? Motion to continue? Roll call.
Motion to continue, applications A 2122 and A 2123 to the July meeting. I believe that's going to be Wednesday, the 28th.
Our next meeting, July 28th at 5:00 PM.
Yep, Mr. Lemina? Yes, Mr. Lopes? Yes, Mr. Pelton? Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, those matters have been continued.
Okay, so now we can take up calendar under A 21-10.
Back to the regular word of business, application A 21-10.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board of appeals. My name is Attorney Larry Simeoni. And this evening, I represent the app, appellant in this matter, J E K Enterprises of Seven Franklin Street, Revere, Massachusetts, which has filed a notice of appeal in accordance with Fodia, Section 15 of the Zoning Act ordinance wherein seeking to appeal the decision of the zoning administrator, Louis Cavanaro, on January 19th, 2021. This particular zoning decision was inside the, an order to correct that was issued on that same day. This appeal is also in accordance with Revere Revised Zoning Ordinance, 17502020, given the authority of this honorable body to hear appeals from the zoning administrator and/or individual building inspectors' decisions. J E K has filed the appeal to overturn this particular decision of January 19th, 2021 of the zoning administrator, specifically if you look at the order to correct, and you've seen it as exhibit one, exhibit eight in our package. Page three says that it establishes the decision and page five provides the right of appeal by the applicant. On February 18th, 21, the appeal, the notice of appeal, the application for appeal and the exhibits were filed with this honorable city clerk in accordance with the statute. Specifically since that time, additional information has been filed on the record to this honorable body, specifically a zoning memorandum with affidavits of Mr. David, Mr. Dan Ray, the former owner of Madison Associates, and Mr. Koch, my client, Joseph Koch, the manager of J E K and Clean Joe, a business that currently operates on the premises. There's also a list of petition from my butters in favor of my client that were provided to this honorable body on May 25th. And a Freedom of Information request findings from the 311 system establishing no violations on behalf of Clean Joe or J E K was filed with this honorable body on March 31st, 21. The records received from the Revere Police Department, Chief Callahan writing the letter to accompany those records established that no noise violations were established. And that was filed on Ma, March 18th of this year. A Sentec Noise Company, which is our consultants, that company has filed a, a study which establishes that no violation of the city ordinance has been established based on its studies and readings in the ambient area of the Clean Joe premises. Bay State Engineering Traffic Study was done, presented to this body on May 24th, 21, establishes that no significant impact is a result of the traffic. We've also submitted for the board's review, the minutes of the council from 1988 to certain years to 1996, which establish nowhere in the records of the city council minutes does it define the word 24/7 or expressly establish the meaning of a typical business in the NB district. Finally, we provided you a plan done by Audi and Dwyer to establish the gross square footage of the property's structures, which is about 19,107 square feet. And that's because if a general business district in the, in the NB district is allowed, as long as it's in a building less than 10,000 square feet. J E K is the property owner. There are two occupants of the property, Clean Joe, a business that's been there since 2018 as well, since the time of the ownership, as well as Board Up Kings. J E K purchased the property in 2018, has operated the property since that time. The property consists of 1.84 acres in the NB district. There's an office building of approximately 3,458 square feet with a garage and warehouses combining to make the 19,107 square feet that I spoke of. Clean Joe has 25 employees. It pays over $15,000 in taxes for both its real estate taxes and tax size taxes. And as more modern businesses are doing, Mr. Koch and his team has annually made contributions to different organizations, $15,000 to $20,000 to help those charities around him. J E K set for, I set forth in its appeal, Mr. Chairman and members, the property's history from 1927 to present. Madison Associates was on the property since 1986, actually from 1941 to 2018. During that time, the small mini fabrication of composite steel panels was done. Madison was a full-service business. They made the composite panels, they sold the composite panels, they repaired the composite panels, delivered them and serviced them. There were no middlemen. In 1988, the NB district came in. This particular property at the time was, was established as industrial. In 1988, when it became neighborhood business, Madison became a non-conforming use. J E K, as I said before, purchased the property in 2018. Madison's description of its business hours of operation and use is established in the affidavit of David Daniel Ray, which has been attached to the zoning memorandum provided to you on May 25th, 2021. J E K's use of the property since 2018 is provided by, to this honorable board, body through an affidavit provided by Joseph Koch, the manager of J E K and the, also the manager of Clean Joe. We've also presented to this honorable body the proposed findings of fact. The proposed findings of fact that we asked the body to adopt include findings and evidence provided by the affidavits of Mr. Ray and Mr. Koch, as well as exhibits provided to the, to the zoning board of appeals. J E K's consultant, sound consultant did a study on April 13th, 2021. It states that all area noises and levels were below the city of Revere's 50 decibel level. That Clean Joe does not produce operative sounds at the levels which exceed the Revere Zoning Noise Control Act of Section 9.08.050. The Board of Health and the Revere Police Department have also provided records at their, at our request and have established that since the control of the property by Clean, with Clean Joe and Board Up Kings, no noise violations have been established or found from 2018 to present. We also submitted a Freedom of Information Act information, information for the 311 system. That Freedom of Information Act went back to 2018 to present. And that, those records provided by the city clerk through ISD establish no violation by either Clean Joe or Board Up Kings. Bay State Engineering provided a traffic study. That traffic study was to evaluate the difference between Madison Associates and the current use Clean, J E K has on the premises. Bay State determined that the current uses traffic volume does not significantly impact neighbors or the surrounding streets. The evidence that's before this honorable body does not support the decision made by the building inspector. In fact, it is, it is no evidence for which the building inspector has come forth with to substantiate his decision. The decision he stated was that neither the NB zone nor any asserted grandfathered use of the property supports any of the structures or premises being utilized for a 24/7 business operation, particularly with the movement and noise generated from large truck vehicles and construction material. He also references that in the NB district is typical NB district hours and operations. A review of the Revere zoning ordinance, as well as all the ordinances in the city of Revere, you will find that no definition of the term 24/7 business or operation is found in the zoning ordinance. Your honorable body will also find that no express terms or conditions in the zoning ordinance or any ordinance deal with what he's describing as typical hours of an NB district or the days of operation. There's no express hours of operation for a use in the NB district, nor any district. When you look at the zoning board of appeals, I'm sorry, when you look at the zoning law under the city of Revere's regulations, specifically 1716010, Table of Uses, which sets forth all allowed districts and all uses under the ordinance. This includes the NB district. There is no express terms or conditions which indicate that, quote, "typical hours of an NB business or days of operation within the table." In fact, the table has no express hours of operation for a use in any district. So, in looking at this decision, we ask, based on the evidence, that you find that there are no regulations that deal or define in the term 24/7, that in fact, Joe, J E K has established itself that it is not a 24/7 business. It has regular hours of operation and answers calls after hours, specifically only when people are in need or require his services. This is not what 24/7 business does. The various dictionaries establish a much more grander definition, something that never stops, never closes, such as taxi companies, hotel, certain hotels, you know, Amazon and any of the other businesses you could think of that were, you know, start in the morning and never stop. Walgreens and so forth. This is again, a business that has standard hours and only responds to after-hours and off-site requests. At this point, I ask you to look at the record and establish that this particular business is also a non-conforming use. I told you that Madison Associates became a non-conforming use in 1988. They sold the property in 2018. At that point, that non-conforming use continues to move, to exist on the land. And my client continued to do general retail services. He services individuals who have fire and other types of property damage. His, his business is for households and businesses. And he provides general retail sales and services. As such, we're, we're asking this body to recognize that he is a non-conforming use. J E K has two non-conforming uses on, on the premises, if you will. One in accessory use and one Clean Joe. That non-conforming use is, has not changed or substantially changed in any way, substantially expanded in any way, and therefore continues to be protected under the zoning act of the state of Massachusetts. We would ask this board to overturn the decision of the building inspector, zoning administrator. I'll stand and ask for any, any questions the board has. There are also people that we brought, Mr. Chairman, that we would like to speak on this matter. Thank you very much.
Okay, seeing that this matter has been almost with us for over a hundred days, we're well aware of all of the information that was submitted in writing. So I ask that if anybody is going to get up to speak, if we already have it in writing, there's no need for you to get up and speak about it because you've already presented it to us. And believe me, we've all had the opportunity to read it and take it in. So please, if you've already submitted something, there's no need for you to get up and try to repeat yourself. Because I will ask that to be, to be stopped. I will try to limit to a two minutes for each person, seeing that we have a lot of people in the audience. So to start this off, I will ask if there's any proponents, anyone in favor? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Leah McCormack.
If you push that up a little.
Leah McCormack. I live at 39 or 41 Franklin Street. I am the tenant who is the neighbor who is right next door to Clean Joe. And there is no sounds, there's no noise that is so... Actually, there's no sounds. You maybe hear the beep, the backup of the truck, which is in the morning when his guys are getting ready to leave. You don't hear anything in the day unless somebody's coming to dump something in the dumpster and that's not even loud. The most noise you hear lately is the city who's working on the bike path. And any noise that I would think any neighbor is currently complaining about would be complaining about that noise. Because you can't hear anything from Clean Joe's with that noise going on. You can hear them starting at like quarter of seven, seven in the morning with the banging, the machines starting. Nothing from Clean Joe's. Not even the sounds of the trucks rolling in because they now use the paved side, not the rock road. So I have to say, I don't know what the big complaints are about. I would think if anybody was to hear it, it would be us because we are right beside him. We are the house and then the road and then the business.
Thank you very much. Any other proponents?
Hello, my name is Stephen Safuni. I live at 32 Maple Street, right off of Franklin Street. I've lived there for over 40 years. I've been a witness to Madison owning the property and to it being recently taken over by Clean Joe's operation. Madison's, they were crude, yelling, screaming. Wherever the wind blew their crap into the marsh and the wetlands behind it, that's where it all ended up. When Joe took over the place, I was amazed to see what, how he transformed it. He didn't just clean the land, he went into the marsh area itself and took out whatever crap that the other owners had that went in there, he took it all out. Including, it looked like an empty oil tank. He made improvements to the front, he never blocked off Maple Street. There was a house there, right off of Maple Street, where a gentleman kept several, it looked like a junkyard, right, right across the street from where main complaints are coming from. They literally had a bird's eye view of this junkyard. Now, this junkyard probably never got a complaint from either one of these people. Now, I lived there, I could see from one end of his property to the other. That property didn't get cleaned up until the gentleman passed away and Mr. Koch bought that property, rehabbed the property, and he cleaned up all that crap, all those 15, 20 trucks. Probably never got a thank you from anybody, but for me, thank you. I don't know why I'm missing something here. I don't see what they see and I don't hear what they hear. Like I say, in the summer, my windows are open. I, I could hear anything going on, probably voices out there. But his property is quiet. They run it a very professional operation. He seems very sincere in trying to keep the place like according to his name, Clean Joe. So again, I don't know what the bruhaha is, but it's, it's got to be something more than, than noise in sight because it's completely transformed. Thank you, sir.
Next, please.
Thank you for hearing us speak. We actually live on Hyde Street, which one of the...
The record, please.
17 Hyde Street, Revere, Mass. We...
You have to state your name.
This is my...
I'm Anala Dzeko.
We are experiencing the fire right now. Clean Joe came to our rescue and has been our angel for us, helping us every step through the way. We're not 100% sure of the no complaints, but from the moment I met him, I knew he was sincere and willing to help me out in any way, shape or form. Honestly, from the minute I met him, I find it hard to believe.
Yeah, we're glad that we have him and that he came and he's helped us so much. And he's there with us all the way. It's been like a hard time. This is something new for us. It's still going on. We're dealing with so much. We don't know about these complaints, but I know that he's been very like good with us. He's so good with us.
And we appreciate it.
Even now that we're dealing, we appreciate it a lot.
Okay, thank you. Could you just state your name slowly so she can recall?
Absolutely. Felma Logo. Let me know if you want me to spell it. It's a weird one. D Z E K O.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Fazila and I live on 632 Washington.
Okay, you have to spell your name, please, or state your full name.
Fazila, F A Z E E L A. And my last name is Sheik, S H E I K H. And I'm from 632 Washington, everywhere. I'm a former client from Clean Joe. Actually, we had a fire in November, November 8th, 2020, in our house. And it was a very tragic incident for us. But thanks, we had Clean Joe and he helped us throughout the process. Even every time we had any question, anything, he's always there for us. He was helping beyond his work and everything. Even our adjuster, whenever we had any question, we called him and he doesn't have answers and Clean Joe has an answer. And he was the man of his words. He told us he'll have the house cleaned within two weeks. And he was trying his best to move us back in the house because it was, COVID was on the peak at that point. And it was 14 people in the house. We had our mother-in-law, father-in-law, kids in the house. It was very scary to stay in hotel at that time. But Clean Joe made sure he cleaned out the house and moved us back in. And he was the man of the words. He made it happen within a month. And we were back in the house with the cooperation of the city as well. And I have nothing else to say, but he's the best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Farah Sheik. I also live at 632 Washington Avenue. We were also impacted by the fire in November 8th, 2020. And we didn't have a choice of who would come in. We didn't know, you know, what the protocols were and the after parts were. We were fortunate. We were fortunate to have Joe's company come over. We walked out with the house looking like flood and everything was all over the place. My kids, uh, my son's room was actually damaged and we're still, um, you know, we're still trying to pick off. Uh, we live on Washington Ave and half the house's divot is still blocked. So we're, we're lucky enough that he was able to clean everything on time and get us back. And, and we just had one request. We said, we have senior citizens with us, can you do your best? And he said, you have my word, I'm gonna do my best. There was about, uh, you know, cleaning crews upstairs, downstairs, everywhere. I, I don't, I wish I, I could get my neighbors to tell you that there was no noise, nothing. We didn't, I don't, I have nothing but positive feedback from the company. God forbid anybody gets, you know, uh, has a tragic event like we did. I would definitely recommend Joe cleaning. It was very satisfying and a relief for my children to walk into the house, well, at least half of the house to come back to that environment. It was a very emotional time, as it is now. We have a friend who's just been impacted yesterday on Hyde Street. And I was, I emailed her all the information, uh, you know, to where to go and how we, uh, you know, who helped us out. So I will always refer them. I have nothing but good stuff to say about them. Thanks.
Are there any other proponents?
My name is James Vasquez. I live at 21 Clifton Street and I also own the garage at 346 Salem Street. I used to do work for Madison when they were there. And I used to do work for George Delgenio, God rest his soul. Madison had tractor, trailer, trucking stuff coming and going way early in the morning and late at night dropping off steel for what the construction they were doing. I worked on a lot of their vehicles, they had all diesel trucks. George Delgenio was probably the same way. He had a lot of plow trucks working for the city. His place looked like a junkyard. Clean Joe and since he's bought the place, anyone that would not want to be his neighbor, it gotta be out of their minds. The place looks so much better than it used to be. And the gentleman that was up here before him, them cleaning everything up, the marsh. I live, um, on the backside of the bike path over there. And I don't hear the noise they're complaining about. If I hear noises from the road or from the, the crew right now that, that, um, doing the bike path, way early, 6:30, they start in the morning, you hear the trucks going. So I, I think it all begins with the complaints from the people. Sometimes when some people complaining, they're wrong. Some from the city, you just gotta tell them they're wrong. To stop it before it gets to this, how much time have we wasted on this? He's a good guy. Anyone that not, would not want to be a neighbor, I wish I had pictures of what the place looked like before to what it looks like now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good afternoon, all. George Rotondo, 90 Home Street. And actually, I think, uh, Mr. Vasquez can probably repeat this. Before the property was owned by Clean Joe, I don't know how many times you called me about people parking illegally in the back there and doing nefarious things, among a whole list of other issues. And I can tell you what I see now is a very, very well-run business, but more importantly, as you had people before you earlier, in fact, the victims from Hyde Street. He provides a service to the community, no different than a towing company and so forth. And more importantly, he does it respectfully. I've been to the site, it's clean. I don't know why it has been litigated so long. I'm not saying anything about the ZBA or anything like that, but I would hope that you would vote favorably. This is not a detriment to our community, but if anything, he is a person that actually has helped and gone out of the way to help our community. And anybody who's ever had a fire and has had a need or a flood and has had this gentleman do his, his job, they can tell you that they've been treated with the utmost kindness, professionalism, and more importantly, diligence. And that's what I can say about Clean Joe. I support him, I hope that you can too. Have a good day.
Thank you. Council President, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anthony Zambuto, 87 Hyde Street, Revere. I find myself in a difficult position here tonight because, as you know, I've been a city council for a long time. Most of the, well, many of those years, I was the chairman of the zoning. So I wrote a lot of these zoning laws. I was horrified when I saw the order of conditions calling out something that doesn't exist anywhere in our zoning. Horrified. And I let people know about it and I, I've spoken at a couple of the Zoom meetings we had before on this issue. And, and to me, this is overturning, I'm, I'm asking the board to overturn the decision of the building inspector, something I've never done in my history. But I've also never had to defend some of the laws that we actually wrote. And, and that's what I feel I'm doing here tonight. And the merits of the business are all fine and, and, and good, but I can't allow precedent to be set, be it by an attorney or that's advising the building inspector or whatever the, whatever the cause of that document was enough to raise my hair and make me stand up and say, this can't stand. So I am asking tonight, and I know it's a difficult decision for the board, but I'm asking the board to overturn this so we can put this to an end and, and then go on to the other issues that exist there, such as occupancy and so forth. But, uh, so my plea is that the board would vote to overturn the decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
My name's Eric Shirtliff.
He turns it off by habit. Could you just turn that on for the Joe?
My name's Eric Shirtliff and I work for Clean Joe. I've worked for Clean Joe for eight years now. Um, I've worked my way from technician up to operations manager. And I, you know, I truly love working for Clean Joe. We get to help people in time of needs. They've had floods or fires and we get to respond and help them out, you know, get their properties back up to the way they were. I also look over the guys on a daily basis and we try to be as respectful as possible regards to noise or anything in that nature. You know, we get ready in the morning, we have, uh, the shop is closed completely and we open up the garage door and the vans are ready to go. So it's, you know, as minimal as possible. And also, if we do have trash at the end of the day, if it's after six o'clock, we hold off and we won't, we don't throw any trash until the next day. So I just want to say that I think I would hate to lose, you know, home base in Revere over such a, you know, small dispute.
Thank you.
My apologies, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I was supposed to tell you that my colleague, the ward six counselor, had a previous family engagement out of town and couldn't be here. And he wanted me to let everybody know that.
That was put on the record.
Okay.
As well as Counsel Omar Abito.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Contact us.
I had promised him I would do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you press that button and turn it on again? Thanks.
I got it. My name's Kevin O'Neil, uh, from, I currently live at 22 Linden Street in Salem. So I'm an employee as well. Um, I've been there for about six years. I started off very similar to Eric. I started off as a technician, uh, pretty much living in my mom's basement at the time. I didn't really have a whole lot of opportunity, but through, uh, working with these guys, they promoted me to a project manager. And I, um, pretty much assist the homeowner in scheduling, I deal with insurance as far as estimating. And, um, I mean, I definitely gotta say, if it wasn't for these guys, I wouldn't be where I'm at today. God knows where I would be. Um, so I mean, I'm very thankful and very grateful for them for giving me the opportunity to, to grow with them. And, um, you know, we just look to, to expand. And, um, you know, we just, just want to continue operating business. And, um, I mean, I'm, you know, definitely not the only employee to, uh, start from a low point and, you know, uh, we're, you know, just looking to progress. And, um, I think that's about it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else as a proponent? Hearing not all closed that side of the hearing? Are there any opponents? Anyone opposed? Please step up to the mic, state your name and address for the record if you don't mind turning it on. Thank you.
John Riccio, 24 Franklin Street. I live right across the street from the Clean Joe property and I've been a resident for 36 years. Uh, I'd just like to state for the record before we begin that there's several, as you said, there's several members of the ZBA not here. Our city counselor is not here. Peter Brown, the attorney for the city, is not here. Paul Capizzi is not here. And it, it has been determined by the city solicitor that Clean Joe is supposed to file for an occupancy permit, was supposed to file for one three years ago and did not because he probably would not have received it. Uh, and that needs to be determined before this hearing can go ahead. I just want that for the record. Uh, the next thing I want is not to negate anybody's opinion, everybody has a right to speak. But some of these people here rent from Clean Joe. At least, uh, one of them here either did or does business with him. Uh, other ones are employees or people have been rescued by him, which is all great, but not necessarily relevant.
Anyone is relevant to speak at a public hearing, sir.
That's what I said.
So it's, it's relevant. It's, it is relevant.
I take that back. It is relevant, but it needs in full disclosure to understand.
And I believe that every one of them fully disclosed themselves.
Very good.
So we can fully understand what they stated.
So basically, the only, the, 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 uh, the information that you have about Clean Joe being, being a 24-hour business, I can sum that up in one question. What hours is he not available? He's available all the time. He advertises that he's available all the time. The next thing is NB zone versus general business zone. There are differences, as you people know. And, uh, one of the major differences is the NB zone was made to be harmonious and not detrimental to the neighborhood. Clean Joe bought the property under those conditions. And, uh, it, it, and now he wants to change it and there will be no difference between that NB zone and general business zone in that area. And, and now to get to what I have to say, I've been a resident for 36 years, I've never complained about Madison. I don't, I would not complain about Clean Joe. In fact, I admire, I met his father, he's from Europe. I, I admire the fact that they're, they're doing the American thing and starting a business. The problem is the 24/7 stuff. I'm not a complainer. But it's loud, it's noisy, there's backup alarms, there's gates opening, closing, large metal gates, trucks revving, hooking up trailers, loading trucks, lifting up doors, all could be in the middle of the night. All that stuff happens and wakes you up in the middle of the night. Madison had nothing like that, nothing. It was nothing of that, in that area. And I want to speak about mitigation in the Ascent Tech report. I had an engineer look at that report in that, in the, excuse me, just gotta get my That report, I'll just read it to you. Oh, and, and one more thing I meant to mention. During this report, they collected data the week of March 11th. And that data recorded sound for the engineering company. And during that normal week of operation, there was 15 after-hours noise violations and another 15 for a total of 30 that could not be directly attributed to Clean Joe because the camera wasn't on it. But at least 15 is determined conclusively. So 15 middle-of-the-night's, um, noise, uh, noise violations. Look, I have to live there. These, we have other people have to live, they're not here, a whole bunch of people not here tonight. And we're just asking for what we had before with Madison. We're not after Clean Joe, we think he's great, as long as it's not the middle-of-the-night stuff. Now, I want to get to the Ascent Tech report. The data was collected on the week of 3/11 from a single microphone behind the office building, the Clean Joe property. The sound was analyzed in the DBA level and DBA means decibels that the human ear can hear. That's all it means. The DBA level-
Sir, we've went over this report extensively, so-
Okay, I got one thing to say. The only house that he used to, to determine that, 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 um, chart was 250 feet away. There are five houses, less than 125 feet away, mine's one of them. He did not use any of those. He did not check any sound from those. I asked him to recalculate and his lawyer told me not to talk to the engineer. But my engineer did recalculate it and they're in violation. That report?
Okay, anything else that you wish to state?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak as an opponent?
My name is Robert Pomsano, 38 Franklin Street. I live across the street from Clean Joe. As his lawyer stated, he says that there was no 311 calls made about the property. Well, I beg to differ because I can prove through the building inspector that I have sent him photos, detailed times and dates of instances of Joe where he claims he works, in his statement, claims that he works from 7 to 6. They, they pull out dumpsters at 6:30 in the morning, they start every morning at 6 o'clock. By 6:30, they're rolling out of there, every day, seven days a week. The backup alarms, like my neighbor said, they took my house, which is 250 feet away, to take the noise decibel sounds. If you take it closer, they're out of compliance. The backup alarms, the constant noise, the call into 311, I mean, we need some relief. I have health conditions, I have a newborn, I have a toddler. They, you know, when these backup alarms are going off and you're swapping out a dumpster at 6:30 in the morning, what do you think that sounds like on a nice day when your windows are wide open? Pretty loud, wouldn't you think? So, you know, when he claims that he's doing the right thing by the neighbors, he's not because we wouldn't be here otherwise. We tried working with him before all this even happened. I mean, you know, let's call it paid, paid here. We're just asking for normal business hours and if he wants to do after-hours operations, why can't he find another facility to do them out and run his normal business hours out of the property? And he wouldn't have a problem with the neighbors because he'd be in compliance then. So that's all I'm asking for, is a little relief. I mean, you know, Sunday morning, this past Sunday morning, 9:00 in the morning, he has a truck backing down the, back where he moved all the dumpsters. So it's all he did so far to, to comply with anybody was he moved the dumpsters. And he moved one trailer. He's still using the paper road for his own personal gain, okay, which is city property. I wish I could do the same, but I can't. And so that's all he's done to do to comply with us is just move the dumpsters and said that he changed up the backup alarms. Well, if you lived across the street and you were in your bed at 9:00 in the morning on a Sunday and you can hear the backup alarm, it's playing its day. So, you know, when he says he's working with the neighbors, he's not because we wouldn't be here otherwise. And again, I just ask for you guys to, you know, put down normal business hours and give us some relief. You know, we're not huge taxpayers like they are, but, you know, we deserve some relief as homeowners. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Anyone else wish to speak? Any of the members wish, do you have any questions? Microphone? I read everything on this and listened to everybody's discussions. I, I want to go against what the building inspector is going forth on this. So I want a motion to go against the building inspector on this. So there's a motion to overrule the building inspector? Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second it.
Roll call. Will you state what the motion is?
Roll call on the motion. Shall the zoning board of appeals overturn the decision of the building inspector? Mr. Lemonna?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the decision of the building inspector has been overturned.
We'll take a three-minute recess so people can exit if they wish. So if I could, I'd just ask that if any conversations, please take them outside the chambers and close the door so we can conduct a regular order of business. chambers and close the door so we can conduct a regular order of business. Okay, we'll be back in session.
Next item on the agenda is application A 2120, Dion Krieger, 453A Broadway, Everett, Mass, seeking a variance of section 17 24010, minimum rear yard setback requirement of 30 feet for lots greater than 6,000 square feet in the RB District of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Revere to enable the appellant to construct a 213 square foot addition and a 316 square foot deck at 313 Prospect Ave.
Okay, could you press the button and state your name and address for the record?
Name is Dion Krieger. I'm the petitioner for the 313 Prospect Avenue. And what we're trying to do, he is just an addition for master bedroom, a master bathroom. It's owner occupied. The intention, I'm the contractor, designer of this project and our intention is just to have more like a private area for the owner. The house has two small bedrooms, which is kind of small for what they want to do. Their family, one of their daughters is coming back to live with them and with the husband. So the owner wants just one small privacy. And if we look at the layout, it's, that's what we're trying to achieve. And the rear lot line, what we're trying to get is a rear wall, which is encroaching kind of a, not meeting the setbacks. We have a deck and already a wall there. We're just extending the bedroom area, but we extend it to following the limits of the existing wall. So in a way, we are trying to set our limits to the existing condition right now.
Okay, is the applicant, are you the applicant?
I am.
Okay, so you're the owner of the property as well?
No, I'm the contractor and, yeah.
Who's the owner of the property?
He's not here right now.
Okay. Did the owner of the property speak to the ward counselor?
To whom?
To the ward counselor in that area?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Because there is, the ward counselor was not in favor of this.
Really?
There's some encroachment and I think you should revisit this. So I would ask that if, I will continue with the hearing, but I would ask that this be continued so that you could meet with the ward counselor and go over these things.
Oh, okay.
Okay? But I'll continue with the hearing. Are there any other proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing and seeing, and I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? But not speaking to the ward counselor and knowing that the ward counselor is not in favor of this, I would ask that this be continued so you can have the discussion with the ward counselor. Is there a motion to continue? Do I have a second? Second? Roll call.
Shall the zoning board of appeals continue this matter to the meeting of July 28th at 5:00 p.m.? Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this matter will be continued.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next application on the agenda is A 2121, Constance Malone Family Trust, 108 Malden Street, Revere, Mass, seeking variances of section 17 24010A1, parking prohibited in the front yard, and section 17 28050F, maximum driveway width for two-family uses of the revised ordinances of the City of Revere to enable the appellant to convert an existing single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling at 108 Malden Street.
Could you press the microphone and state your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, Chairman, members. My name's Kevin Willett. I reside at 108 Malden Street in Revere. This evening, I have the property owner, Constance Malone, the trustee, and the two beneficiaries behind me, Joanne Malone Willett and Thomas Malone. The two items we're seeking relief for is a extension of the width of the driveway at that address from 20 to 40 feet. So we're going beyond the maximum of 20 feet. So we're asking relief for the 40-feet dimension to allow for four automobiles for off-street parking. And the other item we're requesting is the widening of the curb cut from 20 to 40 feet also. So two items. If you have any questions, we should be able to answer.
Okay, I'll continue. On with the hearing. For anyone in favor or any other proponents wish to speak? Hearing not all closed that side. Would you like to speak? Am I right that this is Arthur Granasso's ward? Or whose ward?
It is, correct. 32, isn't that, no, 31, I believe, no. Is it 31 or 32? Anthony Zambuto, 87 Hyde Street. I've known the Malones for many years. I think their request is reasonable and I'm just in favor. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other proponents?
Good evening, members of the board. My name's Thomas Malone. My mother is the homeowner and that's our family home that we grew up in. We're trying to just make the house from a single family to a two-family. And we're requesting the parking variance in the front floor that. That is still going to allow over six, almost 60% of the front yard to still be all grass. It's not like we're looking to totally demolish that area. It will allow for increased parking, which is going to be, I believe it's less than, I think it's around 47% will be the front of the yard. My sister, Joanne, is the principal here in one of the middle schools. I'm a police officer here in the city. We plan to have, that's a family home. We're not looking to flip this down the road, anything like that. My two nephews are still in school here in the city. And like I said, we're just making our family home better and we're hoping to keep it in the family for many generations to come. So I just wanted to let the city know that it's not like some thing we're trying to do to flip this and down the road. My mother's the original homeowner, 1969? 68? 60, excuse me. Thank you, members. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my apologies. I just got a text and from one of my colleagues to tell me that Council Granasso is in favor of this.
Oh, he is. I, he is.
That's why I jumped back.
Yes. I just have to continue on with the hearing. Are there any other proponents? Hearing not all closed that side. Hearing any opponents? Hearing not all closed that side of the hearing. And the ward counselor, Granasso, I did speak to him and he is in favor. This, I just want to make a clarification that these are side-by-side parking because the 40 is not depth, so there's not four cars in depth. So looking at the plan, there was a question that someone asked and these are side-by-side so you're not having problems moving vehicles. There is no utility poles out in front of this home that's, and that was the other question, that there was a utility pole. I didn't see one, so they're all across the street. So those two questions were answered. I just wanted to put that on the record. I have no further questions. I would ask the motion to approve. Is there a second? Roll call.
Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the relief requested? Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Mr. Tucker?
Chairman Tucker? Yes.
Yes, the variance has been granted.
Having no further business, we will return on July 28th at 5:00 p.m. Have a good evening. Up?
Mr. Chairman, please. There's supposed to be a guy up there for the board today by a property owner of 116 Rockstown Avenue. That's why we are here. We are just cleaning up the session.
That was continued at the beginning of the meeting. Yes, it was made very clear that that was continued. It was a motion to continue that due to not having all the four members to vote, more members to vote. July 28th at 5:00 p.m. Yes, if, you know, I'm sorry that you didn't hear that, but we stated right at the beginning of the meeting, we offered the continuance and we stated the address. Motion to continue?